See your city council, welcome. My name is Paul Blackburn. I'm going to call us to order. First, we're going to silence our cell phones. And then I'm going to remind us that as we gather today, we respectfully acknowledge that the land on which the city of Hood River sits is the ancestral home of indigenous peoples. This includes the Nez Perce, Umatilla, Warm Springs Yakama, and other tribes who stewarded this land for generations. We recognize the lasting impact of colonialism and commit to working together for a more just and sustainable future. Now please join me as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Jen, do we have Gladys online this evening? All right, so let the record show we have six of seven, oh, seven of seven councillors, superb, thank you. The very first order of business for me is to recess this meeting to convene the urban renewal meeting, so I will pass the quote gavel to Chair Sipina.
Okay, so the heading's called Order, the Hood River Urban Renewal Agency. Any agenda additions or corrections?
There are none.
Next up is business from the audience. Has anybody signed up for the urban renewal board?
I don't believe so. I think everyone has signed up for the regular city council meeting.
And anybody online, Jim? Okay. So next will be the consent agenda. Any comments, or if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first from Paulson, second from Gekki. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your vote's aye. Gladys? Gladys, we can't hear you if you're speaking. Okay, I suppose we'll just have to go with six. And, yeah, all right, then, so.
Cheers to Pina. If I may, I just, I have a text from Consul Rivera that she's trying to join from her computer and it's not working, so she's probably going to drop off and come back on her, on her telephone.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the motion passes. Next is regular business items, supplemental budget, and Will. Uh, next is regular business items, supplemental budget, and Will.
Thank you, Chair Sabina, uh, members of the Urban Renewal Agency Board, first item of business today, uh, regular business is a resolution twenty twenty-five U R A dash oh one. And that's um, the first supplemental budget for the year, supplemental, supplemental budgets are um, allowed to address issues that were not uh, known or anticipated during the uh, adoption of the, of the budget. And so, uh, what we have uh, for today is uh, updated beginning fund balances after now that the audit's complete and we know those uh, numbers for certain. We can adjust from uh, budgeted beginning fund balances to actual, that just helps with continuity of budget documents and have us keep a more sort of a real-time understanding of uh, the finances of the agency. Uh, so uh, most all of the updated beginning fund balances are very close to budget with the exception being uh, Columbia Cascade. That uh, has a higher beginning fund balance by four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, and that's due to uh, changing the timing of the stormwater project. So we uh, adjusted the sequencing uh, uh, between the last phase of the uh, waterfront area and the uh, work that's gonna be done in downtown and so because that money was uh, unspent, created a higher uh, beginning fund balance that carry forward. That's only because that work is now gonna happen in this year or the next fiscal year. Um, there's also an increase of interest uh, appropriations to uh, remit to the county for the Columbia Cascade. Just a reminder that uh, the Columbia Cascade has ceased collecting um, tax increment uh, because the amount of money that is collected equals its spending authority. And so now any money earned on uh, interest earnings must be remitted back to the county and being distributed back to all the overlapping taxing districts, uh, the city of Hood River being one of those. Um, we earned more interest than was budgeted, um, and so we have to bud, we needed a budget adjustment so we can make that full payment to the county. Um. See, over to the west side, there's a higher tax increment revenue, uh, I had budgeted uh, for one year of tax increment. Not doing the math correct, that we had actually threaded the needle and uh, created the district with perfect timing so that that first frozen base was gonna be F Y. I think it is uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, and so we got two years of increment, this is just adjusting for that. Um, and then also taking on uh, the west side formation district that we uh, were required to pay back to the city as part of an I G A, uh, the agency committed to paying, uh, refunding the city for the formation costs for the west side district. And the repayment period uh, was uh, we were allowed up to ten years uh, and a set interest rate in uh, an intergovernmental agreement that was passed about two years ago. And so now I have um, just uh, done a, now a look back as, and an accounting of all the money that it did cost to create the west side district, about a hundred thousand dollars. And put together a uh, payment uh, plan that I think will be reasonable and and workable for the, the district to repay. And so the first year of uh, repayment of that is gonna be just interest only uh, on boat, uh, need a budget for that, and it's about fifteen hundred dollars in interest uh, due to the city. Um, those are the highlights of the supplemental budget, but happy to answer the questions.
Consul Mitchell?
Um, mentions formation costs, uh, what's involved with the cost of form a U R A or district, excuse me?
Thanks, yeah, the, uh, there's a lot of work that needs to go in, uh, that's required by Oregon revised statute, it's the uh, creation of the plan itself. A report accompanying the plan that has a whole lot of uh, background uh, and statistical information that must support the plan. Um, all of this was brought to city council and approved when we uh, uh, as backup to the ordinance that created the district itself. But we hired um, Elaine Howard Consulting, supported by uh, Tiberius Solutions, and I believe there was uh, some legal uh, workers as well that uh, went into creating that. Um, big stack of documents that basically laid out the whole justification for the district and, and all the financial assumptions um, within it.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Will. Uh, next up is the agency attorney appointment.
Oh, it's.
Oh, sorry. Hey, thanks.
Uh, I move the Urban Renewal Agency Board adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash U R A dash zero one, a supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five.
Wait a second. Alright, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Hi Gladys, thank you. Chair votes aye, uh, passes, okay. Now, the agency attorney appointment.
Great, thank you, yes, um, so I'd like to um, propose uh, the appointment of uh, an agency attorney. Heather Martin has been serving the agency through her um, work as a supplemental contract to support the city attorney, Dan Cairns. Um, but uh, the agency itself has been without a dedicated agency attorney for about a year and a half. Deborah Phillips was the agency attorney for uh, many years, uh, and before that she was the um, city attorney uh, for the city Hood River back in the nineties. Um, but she uh, retired in twenty twenty-three and um, Dan Cairns and with the supplemental help he has um, through the Barry uh, Barry Elsner contract that he um, he has to support him was doing a sufficient job, but it really would be helpful um, if we have a good candidate to refill that vacancy and appoint a dedicated agency attorney. Um, it uh, for one, allows there to be two different attorneys reviewing contracts that are in between the city and the agency when we have intergovernmental agreements, it's very practical consideration. Um, but two, it's just also useful to have an attorney who has uh, specialization in, in real estate law, um, uh, business law, uh, those aspects, which is much more of the economic development forecast, uh, focus of the agency versus uh, city attorneys usually deal much more in land use laws, regulatory issues, code enforcement, things like that and um, uh, Heather Martin, as I've been working with her on the Mariposa uh, Development Disposition Agreement as, and as well as putting together the um, uh, lease agreement for twelve seventeen May Street, uh, really exhibited to me that uh, she has a, a, a number of those skills that Deborah Phillips had been providing to the agency and uh, would be a good fit to uh, fill that vacancy, um, if the agency board agrees.
Questions for Will? This one for me, so there, there's, there's no R F P pro- process that we have to go through or, you know, interviewing the select people, we have the discretion?
We, well, we may choose to do that if we want to, but this is an appointment, um, you know, uh, officer appointment of the, the agency board, so you can direct a point for a legal counselor.
Okay.
Also, if I might chime in, um, um, urban renewal is a very specialized area and it's governed by a particular uh, statute in state law. And Heather has this in her wheelhouse, it's really hard to find a qualified urban renewal attorney. And, you know, I, I filled in after Debra retired, but she, Heather is for, more familiar with a lot of the mechanical issues that the agency deals with, but also the urban renewal statute. Um, so she would be super qualified for this and be a great fit for it, and uh, she already is a subcontractor under me since I um, uh, referred to them to her firm on a number of specialized issues, and they fill in for me when I'm out of town.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, any questions or discussion? Right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the Urban Renewal Agency Board appoint Heather Martin as the Hood River Urban Renewal Agency Attorney and authorize the agency administrator to execute a contract with Barry Elsner and Hammond for her legal services.
Motion from Rivera?
Second.
Second from Paulson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Hey, administrator updates.
Yeah, thank you, this is just a couple verbal updates with uh, no staff report. Um, wanted to make sure everyone knew that the um, middle housing construction incentive that was authorized by um, the agency through a minor amendment to the west side district plan last year. Uh, we've got the materials uh, fully developed and they're up posted on the west uh, west side districts webpage. Um, so we're all ready to take applications, I'm not um, pushing this uh, hard right now, um, because uh, I wanna yeah, I'll have an update on our professional services R F Q, but I, that has taken the majority of my focus, uh, and effort is getting through a long list of applicants uh, for that, and um, I believe that the firms that we award through that per um, process will be able to help with uh, advertising the program um, as well and, and implementing it, so I wanted to sort of wait to really uh, prime the pump until we had that uh, administrative bandwidth on, on, on contract to help out. Um, but also just wanted you to know that it was up there and, and ready to go, and uh, once we do, uh, get the word out.
Great.
Uh, and then an update on the professional services R F Q, so, so as a reminder, we uh, put out a request for qualifications for on-call services that range a spectrum of work that we might need as an agency over the next five years, so that goes from uh, like economic uh, economic development work, urban renewal agency administration, over to civil engineering, traffic engineering, uh, construction testing, uh, to construction management, kind of the whole gamut that we can um, get on board right now and have at our fingertips. Um, because often in the context of our renewal, uh, development agreement will come in or the chance to buy per, or per, purchase a piece of land, you know, will come up for sale. There's not enough time to spend multiple months doing R F Q to get uh, someone on board, so um, having those folks at our fingertips, I think will allow us to be nimble and really jump uh, at opportunities as they uh, as they arise. So we had um, thirty-seven responses and uh, we interviewed twenty-seven firms and uh, we're doing our final scoring uh, now, um, and uh, hope to uh, get the short, short list together that will then look at references, and I hope to have con- uh, contract recommendations to you um, at your second meeting in uh, February. And then uh, update on the jurisdictional transfer in the heights of, the height section of um, O R two eighty-one. Uh, Consul Paulson and I will be headed to Salem tomorrow morning, very early, and we have uh, meetings set up with seven uh, legislators. Uh, it's part of uh, City Day at the Capitol hosted by the League of Oregon Cities, and so we'll be there to really uh, push our jurisdictional transfer um, and uh, make sure people are aware of it and um, have a chance to ask us questions directly, um, just to really raise its profile. We have a placeholder bill that's already out there for us and Tigerd, but it doesn't have any dollars attached to it. Um, and so that's really something we gotta work on to explain, uh, explain our ask, and then uh, um, I will be also presenting to the uh, Oregon uh, ODOT Region One Area Commission on Transportation, uh, which is like an advisory group to ODOT, uh, to just uh, explain to them our plans for the heights and our jurisdictional transfer application process went uh, next week on uh, Monday night. Those are all my updates.
Any questions for Will about any of the three updates? Great, thanks, Will.
Thank you.
Uh, any items from agency members? Usually don't get many of these, but anything to bring up around urban renewal? Usually it's. Okay, great, uh, well with that, I'll adjourn the uh, meeting of the Hood River Urban Renewal Agency and pass the gavel back to Mayor Blackburn to reconvene city council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll reconvene any agi- and dis- agenda additions or corrections, Abigail.
Uh, no, but I'd like to suggest just reordering things in the action item list. Uh, number one listed there is the city council work plan, I think that might be a kind of lengthy discussion, so how about we make that one the last one uh, on the action item list?
Sounds fine to me, anybody object? Great, thank you.
Thanks.
We have a number of folks who have signed up to speak to us tonight, I'll just take it in order, we have Jody Baer followed by Brian Carlstrom. If you come on up and touch the edge of that disk, it will turn green uh, on one of the white places.
You got it, alright, you're on, Jody, if you can tell us what's on your mind, and Jen, if you can keep the timer for us, thanks.
So this is a request to revise the landscape contract for care of the city of Hood River public lands that is in your package tonight um, for discussion to stop the use of all chemicals or sprays that kill the soil. We can maintain our public lands without the use of any chemicals or sprays, and if done reasonably well, the soil will regenerate itself from its current state. The plants, especially natives, will thrive and the animals that rely on these places will be sustained, including the humans. The contract that is in tonight's council packet is a five-year contract for care of city-owned public lands, Jackson Park and our other city parks are included. Detention ponds and bioswales are also included, I think there was like seven detention ponds and these are our rainwater, also referred to as stormwater facilities that run off directly into our creeks, river streams, and eventually to the Columbia. We need these facilities to clean the water, which I happen to be an expert at, not be a pollution source. The choices you make tonight impact all of us living here and every being that lives downstream of those spray hoses, which is really the whole planet if you think big enough. It is imperative that we stop polluting the land and we care for the land simply so that it can regenerate. The soil is a living organism and is critical for life on planet Earth. In a single tablespoon of soil, there are fifty billion microbes. These microorganisms are the life in the soil. The science is beautiful and a minute of your research time will fill your senses with a picture of the beauty that is going on beneath our feet and literally stops us in our tracks in the Columbia River Gorge. All we need to do is get out of the way and stop putting poison on the land. Please support us in this first step to stop spraying on our public lands. If you haven't seen it yet, please find Common Ground. The three-minute trailer online is inspiring and speaks to the truth through beautiful scenery and har- hard but real information based in science and supported by the hearts of all of us that thrive as gardeners and caretakers of the land. My friend Peg Layler brought Common Ground here last year and a bunch of us saw it at Andrews. If you did see it, please share your, please share what you learned with your fellow uh, counselors tonight during discussion. If we work together, we can do this, we need education and we need to take down the fences and support one another. This earth and the future possibility of the human tribes. Please, we must stop killing the soil, this is our land to care for, it's a huge responsibility, we can do this. Please take the first step tonight and request staff to hold on this contract, ask us for help if necessary. Amend the contract or whatever, whatever else you and staff sort out so that we can stop the pollution and shift into the regenerative phase. Together, we can do the impossible one step at a time, and thank you for switching, it sounds like you'll get to this topic a little bit earlier tonight, so hopefully we can stay for that.
Thank you, Jody. Brian followed by Bonnie Withers.
Alright, it's been a while since I've been up here.
Hi, Brian.
And I don't recognize very many up there, but I appreciate y'all being here, I know it's a lot of hard work. Do I have to touch this green thing again, or is this good?
It's green, we're good.
Okay. So about twenty-plus years ago, Hood River City Council pushed for fluoride to be added to the Hood River drinking water. A small group of citizens, including me, fought to keep that poison out of the system. I knew at the time that fluoride weakens bones, causes fluorosis in teeth amongst other things. What I didn't know was that it lowers I Q in children. A new government study now proves that. Now, after decades of promoting government, of promoting fluoride, government agencies are now recommending that it be removed from drinking water in the United States. I'm happy that our small group prevailed against the Hood River City Council and kept fluoride out of Hood River's drinking water. Red dye number three was deemed safe for many decades, the C D C has finally admitted that it actually causes cancer and it should not be consumed. It's still poisoning our kids can, in, in candies, cereals and other foods. Why am I bringing these seemingly unrelated subjects up? It's water under the bridge. Unfluoridated, I hope. Um, here's why I'm bringing it up, sometimes the quote, experts are wrong, often the experts are wrong. Five G microwaves are a smaller microwave technology, higher frequency than the three G, four G, and as a result, they need way more towers. They need to be about five hundred feet to a thousand feet apart and lower down closer to human activity. Um. Anyway, like with fluoride, the red dye number three, which were claimed to be safe at the levels that they were used, but decades later, they were proved to be wrong, 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 they were all wrong, all these experts. Because of the wavelength, okay, I already covered that. Okay, so. Okay, so um. Without any public comment, these towers are starting to pop up in Hood River like mushrooms. There's one by Taco Bell, another by Farm Stan. And another up at Rose Hours and the recommendation as far as coverage goes. That they be five hundred to a thousand feet apart in order to have whatever benefit they might have. These. These microwaves are possibly carcinogenic. We don't know for sure. They might be totally fine. A lot of people think they're just fine. But there is a possibility that they're carcinogenic. Should the citizens. Have a voice in that, in this matter. There's three in town now. There could be, if the trend continues, they could be on every block in front of schools and churches and whatnot. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Bonnie and then Peggy Dollar.
Mayor.
Proclamation now.
Yes, um. Bonnie is here to, for the library proclamation, so I think we can skip over her and then um, because they're on the agenda.
We'll skip over you now, thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Uh, Peggy and then is it Alanda, perhaps?
Well, I'm gonna just speak at the first paragraph and I'm gonna pass it to my sister and finish the last one. Council members, our environment needs help. In nineteen sixty-two, Rachel Carlson's. Silent Spring warned us about the dangers of chemical pesticides to animals and humans. Today, we face an even greater threat, climate change.
Recent research shows that healthy soil can safely store excess carbon from our atmosphere. However, chemical sprays kill essential microbes in the soil, hindering this natural process. Hood River has a unique opportunity to become an environmental leader. We already have strong partnerships for conservation, including the Hood River Watershed Group. Which has enhanced fish habitats and remove barriers to fish passage. I urge you, Peggy urges you, to dig deeper into the science of soil health and carbon sequestration. Let's build on our existing environmental efforts and commit to reducing harmful chemical use. By doing so, we can combat climate change and protect our beautiful Columbia River ecosystem.
Hood River can set an example for other communities. Let's take this crucial step towards a sustain- sustainable future. Thank you.
Thank you all. Did I say that right, Alanda? Stelter.
Hello.
Hi there.
I don't think I know all you, so. I'll introduce myself. My name's Alonda and I've lived here like twenty-six years, raised a family in the Upper Valley. Very involved in the community. My kids were in four H Cooper Spur Race Team. Being a native Oregonian, I love this valley. I've um, always been into organic, healthy food. Um, healthy lifestyle. I had an organic farm I'll raise in my children. And then ten years ago, I became one of the owners of Farm Stand in the gorge up on 12th Street. And I poured my heart and my soul into providing healthy food for this community and supporting local. Um, growers and producers. Uh, well, circumstances took me to Colorado for a couple of years. And my nieces and other partners took over in the running the farm stand. And so I was super shocked when I came back this summer and I saw a five G tower in my parking lot. Um, frankly, I felt violated. I felt raped. I know this is really controversial, but there are many stories of five G damaging our health. And in my opinion, from my research, it hasn't been proven safe. I know it's hard to make change. I mean, Jody's tried to make a lot of changes and in order for us to. Why like make part a bike path past the. Farm stand, there has to be permission from all the, you know, all the different businesses and. And lots of money and lots of permission. And yet, in front of my twenty feet, right out my window, in front of my desk, in front of my office, nobody asked me. There's this five G tower sitting there. No one asked the children at the school right down the ro- down the road if they wanted a five G tower and nobody asked the people in the hospital. Working to save people's lives if they wanted a five G tower, one block away. Um, when things are not proven safe, we as adults get to make these decisions, but our children, they don't. And what if down the road our children have health issues? Nothing is worth our children's health. We don't need five G in this town. My internet works great. We have fiber optics. My phone works fine without five G. The main thing is why is the AT&T and T-Mobile can. Make decisions without anybody's permission. They don't live here. They don't care. They're just big money-making corporations. They, they just come in and take over. I don't know the answer. I've wanted to come talk to you guys for a while, but I've kind of wanted to do my research. I come up with pretty much nothing. And I just wanted you guys to know that I don't agree. I feel violated and that I've had a lot of feedback from my customers. They feel the same way. At Farm Stand. And that they're very concerned and I just request that we do our best to make our community a healthy, safe place for all of us to live. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Laura McGill.
Hi, Council. Thanks. This is my first time. Thank you for listening. I don't have anything written. Um, I am here as a concerned citizen. To back up what these fine folks have been sharing with you about essentially mitigating. Widespread poison. That is in the form of spraying. It's in the form of five G towers. We do know that there's adverse effects. There's lots of information out there. I think that anytime. These types of things are implemented into our society. There absolutely should be a public discussion about it first. We should always be choosing the least toxic. Non-toxic options. There are always options. I work with children. I work with many families of children. It concerns me to bring them to these parks and these places that are constantly being bombarded with various types of poisons. And I hope that me simply being here for the first time gives you an idea of. How many people are actually concerned and talking about this and I'm here on their behalf. So thank you so much for your time tonight and I hope you will really deeply consider these issues and. Create a, a. I, I like what this, what this person said about us being. An example for the rest of the world of just what we might be able to accomplish if we choose. This value of a non-toxic lifestyle, non-toxic society. Um, on the rest of the world. I'd really love for us to, to be the bastion of that. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming. So the organizational structure is we are not going to discuss and address these issues now. We do have a place at the end where we check back in with ourselves about whether we wish to put them on a future agenda. Next, we have a proclamation from Bonnie Withers.
Thank you very much. It's a delight to be here this evening. And bring you news about the nineteenth year of Hood River Reads. Um, a program of the Friends of the Hood River County Library. This year, we wanted very much to find a book that would help us to. Um, get to know our native neighbors better. And we wanted to find something written by a native author and we were so fortunate to find. Beef Beth, excuse me, Beth Pyatote is her name. Uh, she is uh, Nez Perce. Polville. She is a assistant professor of compare- uh, comparative literature at UC Berkeley. Has done a lot of uh. Were writing especially on revitalization of native languages and that's part of the first part of this book. But what this is, is a, is a, a set of short stories mostly, and there's a play at the back. Uh, you have a copy of the um, brochure, which really describes the contents very well, so I won't go into that again. But she's going to be here March first, second and third. Uh, and the kickoff, when we're going to be giving away books is uh, very soon, February eighth. And with that, I would like to read this uh, proclamation, if I may. Whereas Friends of the Hood River County Library have organized the Hood River County Reads Program. To support reading books and discussing ideas among all members of our community. And whereas the selection of the beadworkers, stories by author Pyatote. Member of the Nez Perce, writer, scholar, and indigenous language revitalization advocate. Gives Hood River County the opportunity to engage in stories that explore the contemporary lives. Of indigenous people in the Pacific Northwest. Exposing the injustices that continue to underscore their lives along with joy and celebration. Of, and the power of kinship. And whereas the city of Hood River celebrates the history and richness of our Northwestern people. And whereas Hood River Con- County Reads has been endorsed, supported and financially assisted by. Local schools, businesses and organizations. As well as the Hood River County Library Foundation, Star Seed Foundation, Hood River County Education Foundation. Friends of the Hood River County Library, Hood River Cultural Trust, Gorge Community Foundation, Hood River Valley. Leos and generous individuals. And whereas the author Beth Pyatote presents works, talks, excuse me, and workshops for our students and community at large. And whereas over six hundred copies of the beadworkers stories will be distributed. So that can be read and discussed at multiple venues throughout the county. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Hood River establishes February twenty twenty-five to April twenty twenty-five as. Hood River County Reads. And I want to add one little P S on here because it said six hundred copies. We had, we. Typically give about a hundred and forty copies of this, of the book to schools. Um, to see teachers want to use it in different ways. And once it started to get distributed, we had. A uh, a special request for two hundred more copies. Uh, which is really exciting. So with that, I'll tell you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for the work organizing. Uh, I will. Not at this moment, but staff will help me take care of uh, uh. Ratifying that proclamation.
Okay, thank you very much. You.
Hannah is back for Gorge Grown. Hi, Hannah.
Um, hi all. For folks that don't know me, my name is Hannah Ledwig-Nanda and I'm the Farmers Market Operations Director. For Gorge Grown Food Network. Um, so on behalf of Gorge Grown and the Farmers Market, I want to first thank you for um, your support and past support of the Farmers Market. Historically, the city counselors have waived our lot fee for the East of the Columbia lot. Um, and we've always put that savings back into our SNAP match program, which I will talk about. Um, for folks that don't know, SNAP is formerly known as food stamps. It's a federally funded program that helps low-income families. And individuals pay for food. Um, historically, Gorge Grown had had a fifteen-dollar SNAP match program at the River Farmers Market. So fifteen dollars becomes thirty dollars at the Farmers Market to shop. In May of twenty twenty-three, we developed a much more robust SNAP program. Um, working with Farmers Market Fund, who organizes Double Up Food Bucks throughout Oregon. Um, so we added this new program and by increasing um. The match that Gorge Grown provides, we were able to offer a tripling program for SNAP customers at the market. So. Twenty dollars became sixty dollars to shop at the market. So to break that down, twenty dollars comes off the SNAP customer's card, twenty of it comes from Double Up Food Bucks. And twenty of it comes from Gorge Grown Food Network through waived fees for the lot, market sponsorship. And then just general um, unrestricted funds that we're able to fundraise. So we feel this program is really essential. Ensuring local food uh, is accessible to everyone in our community is the cornerstone of our work at Gorge Grown. And unfortunately, SNAP benefits are inadequate to help most folks maintain a healthy diet throughout the month. In spring of twenty twenty-three, pandemic benefits were cut and SNAP allotment, um. Snap, those emergency SNAP allotments were stopped. And since then, Fish Food Bank has seen what they call a significant increase in clients. With some clients reporting that their SNAP benefits were as little as twenty-three dollars per month to buy groceries. So although in twenty twenty-four, the SNAP maximum actually went up slightly. It didn't increase at the same rate that food prices have increased and are continuing to do so as we speak. So the SNAP program at our market has countless ripple effects, but if we want to speak most broadly, it's a triple win. Families bring home more fruit, fresh fruits and vegetables. Local farmers get a financial boost and our local economy thrives. Altogether, last year, SNAP, SNAP match and Double Up Food Bucks, Food Bucks brought in more than a hundred and two thousand dollars in sales to the Farmers Market. That's nearly seventy thousand dollars of that came from federal and state grants and um, federal benefits. And the in- uh, economic impact of this uh, flows throughout our community. So a Feeding America study showed that for every dollar in SNAP spent generates between a dollar fifty and a dollar eighty in economic activity. And to share a little bit more about um, our SNAP data, so SNAP sales, not including the match, were about thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, that's a twenty percent increase from the previous year. Um, G- Gorge Grown gave out about thirty-three thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars in match incentives and then the same amount in Double Up Food Bucks. And we have a really high uh, redemption rate at our market, so more than ninety-five percent of the currency that we distribute is redeemed. And we're serving more people than ever before. So uh, this year, two hundred and eighteen customers used SNAP at the market for the first time. Each market day, we serve an average of fifty-one uh, customers using SNAP. That's up six to six people from twenty twenty-three and up thirty-three people. From twenty twenty-two. Um, something new we did this year, we were able to provide nineteen customers who use SNAP at the market with a free annual gorge pass. From Columbia Area Transit, so they could take public, public transit to the market. And in your packet, you'll also see a lot more um, in-depth SNAP, SNAP um, customer data and surveys that we did with Farmers Market Fund and OSU. Uh, in addition to our SNAP match growth, we supported a hundred and two family farmers, food producers. And small businesses through the market. We averaged thirteen hundred customers each week, which is up about a hundred folks from the previous year. We hosted fifteen organizations to provide free community outreach at the market. Our gross sales increased about nine percent. Fresh fruits and vegetable sales increased about twelve percent. And Farmers Markets are just a really crucial business incubator for folks in our community. Um, markets provider, a low barrier entry point for farms and food businesses. Uh, thirty-three percent of farms and food businesses at the Farmers Market are new or beginning businesses. Nearly two hundred people in our community are employed by Farmers Market vendors. And Farmers Markets can be especially important to business owners with limited um, access to capital that is often required to start a business. So seventy-five percent of our vendor businesses are owned or co-owned by women. And fifteen percent of our vendor businesses are Hispanic or Latina-owned. And throughout our programs, Gorge Grown is working to support under resup- um, underrepresented local farmers. Producers and entrepreneurs. Um, you know that many aspiring entrepreneurs face really challenging licensing processes and um. Really high commercial kitchen rental costs. So last year, we piloted a vendor incubation program at the Mercado in Odell. And provided stipends and reimbursements for six BIPOC-owned uh, s- business startups. In twenty twenty-five, we're committed to expanding that program and helping um. Black and indigenous entrepreneurs and entrepreneurs of color. Um, we aim to help empower them and their businesses thrive uh, in the food industry and promote long-term. Economic growth with underrepresented communities. You can read more about our work in the impact report that I linked, or I have a few copies here if you'd like. And then looking ahead, we're gearing up for another successful season at the market. We aim to continue our robust SNAP and Double Up Food Bucks program. And then I again ask that you um, vote to waive uh, our rental fee for the twenty twenty-five season.
Thanks for your great work in that very informative report. I know in the past, we had kind of wanted to know a little bit more. I feel very satisfied knowing. The, the good leverage that our investment makes. So this is a uh, a choice that we're gonna make or not make. Uh, any, any questions or comments for, or for, for Hannah or on the topic?
Uh, I'd just like to say as a former SNAP recipient, I utilized this benefit at the. Hood River Farmers Market and uh, it was uh, it's a really great, great program. Uh, so. Hugely, hugely supportive of it. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Gladys.
Yeah, can you all hear me okay?
Yeah, I hear you good.
Great, thank you. Hannah, thank you so much for being here today. Thank. Thank you for the extensive report. I will admit that I was the one that last year asked for very specific demographic data of those participating. Uh, I appreciate the, all the additional wraparound services that you and Gorge Grown are providing. Uh, and as a former board member, I'm just incredibly proud of everything that has been accomplished and continues to be accomplished uh year after year. So thank you and thanks, thanks to everyone at Gorge Grown for continuing to feed our community and finding ways to incorporate other businesses and other organizations to share information. So I would be more than happy to make a motion if none of my peers have any other questions or comments.
Thanks, Gladys. Hold on just a second. Abigail, do we pass this later or now?
No, you, uh, you can pass it now. You have a motion um in the packet.
Great. Uh, so moved by Gladys, I think. Second, second by Amanda. Uh, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, thank you, Hannah.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you down there. Uh, Mike Shan?
Good evening, council.
Good evening, Mike.
How are you doing?
All right.
Good, good. Uh, two items for the Hood River Lions that I'd like to talk to you about. First one is Man Park. And uh, we would like to request the time that we could work together with you to have a dedication ceremony for Man Park. Now, it has to work on your schedule because we wanted to also, you know, be somewhat finished, but also in nice weather. You know, I don't want standing up in the rain. But if you could give us about a month notice, because we'd like to do all the marketing for that, uh newspaper, radio, social media, and we plan to invite all the neighbors, you know, a little special flyer to come to the grand opening or dedication, whatever you want to call it. Um, so if you would do me a favor and just let me know, I guess Abigail could do that, not through you. So just give me thirty days if you could, of when you'd like to do that.
Great.
Okay, that's it.
I'm excited to, excited to play there.
It's pretty nice. I'm sure you've all been over there. It's uh, it's wedding equipment. Kids are gonna love it. I think the, actually, I think it'll draw kids from other neighborhoods there as well. Yeah, it's pretty nice. Second item, the Families in the Park, is another Lions project. And in the last few years, you've been a sponsor, and that's what I'm requesting that you do that again. There's no cash changing hands here. It's basically you give us an in-kind waiver of your fees to the park. And then that will mean we get to be a, a full sponsor. Um, and we'd also like to invite any of you to come on August seventh, which is the first night in the park, and have you come up on stage. I think it's, it's not only good for the program, it's good for you as well, to people to see you as a city doing this kind of outreach. Uh, so that's my two cents on that one. But, so it doesn't cost any money, in other words. It's just a, a goodwill thing and we'd love to have you again. I think it's a good partnership. They have the city involved with that. We've been averaging about two thousand people a night, so it's again, way to get your faces and names out there as well as just the city of Hood River.
How many years has it been going on, Mike?
It started in eighty-three. And when I retired in two thousand nine, I never thought I'd end up doing that again. Um, but the school district decided they wouldn't do it. And then I said to the Lions Club, I said, look, I know how to do this. Let's not let that die. And thank goodness we did.
Thanks for having me.
Built that canopy and all that, it's, it's really, uh, it's quite the, quite the project now.
Great, thanks so much, Mike.
So that's it.
Great. Is, is any questions for Mike at this time? And?
I just want to acknowledge all the work that the Lions have done and, and say thank you very much for some contributions.
You're welcome. We're happy to do it. So you'll let Abigail know on that too, I'm sure, and she'll let me know if you're going to be a sponsor. Because I got to get started with the marketing on that too, so.
Correct.
Actually, uh, they have a, a motion in their packet right now for consideration.
Oh, well, could be quick.
Um, I move to approve the request to waive twenty twenty-four and the park usage fees for Families in the Park.
No, no, it's twenty twenty-five. That was a typo. Our fault.
Moved by Ann. Second.
Second by Ben. Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. See you in August.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
That takes us to our consent agenda. Uh, I'm going to take off item number two. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Moved by Grant.
All second.
Second by Gladys. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Item number two, Gladys, will you tell us?
Yes, I will abstain from OLCC permit application approvals. This is not a reflection of visa establishments, businesses, or their owners. Rather, I object to the fact that we don't have enough transportation options for people who visit these establishments. As a result, they may end up getting behind the wheel and putting themselves and others at risk. If we and our countywide partners are able to provide adequate transportation during late evenings and weekends, I will be happy to start approving OLCC applications.
Thank you, Gladys. Uh, I would entertain a motion for item number two.
I move that we approve the OLCC permit application for freem manufacturing slash production at five oh six Columbia Street.
Moved by Stupina. Second by Cavallari. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you all. Moving on to action items, we are bumping City Council work plans. So that takes us to Crystal Greens, Adam.
All right. Being, being mayor and councillors, on page thirty-four uh in your packet, uh you will find both the cover memo and the Crystal Greens Park Landscaping Service Agreement. Um, in twenty twenty-one, uh the city entered into a parks landscaping contract with Crystal Greens. Uh, this was to provide uh both landscape maintenance and irrigation management uh for all city parks. Um, this uh maintenance includes um nine uh designated park areas, uh including uh Overlook Memorial, um Stratton Rose Garden, Collins Field, uh Saruda Tennis Courts. Um, there's two small pocket parks and uh the Second Street Planters that are in between Oak and State Street. Um, and additional to their landscaping, uh they also perform uh day porter service, uh which includes the um emptying of uh trash receptacles um in all parks and um the, the higher-use parks like um uh Jackson Children's and Waterfront. Um, they have weekend uh service to those locations as well. Um, the last four years, uh we formed a great working relationship uh with uh, with Crystal Greens, and the service uh has also greatly improved uh the appearance and upkeep of the city parks. Um, within the contract, uh just some key um, some key additions. Uh, this is a five-year contract. Um, there's a three percent annual increase uh for each of those uh five years. Uh, there's added frequency to the uh bio-swell um uh detention ponds. Um, the uh Seventeenth and May Street Park has been added to the contract as well. Um, and there's a additional January and February um cleanup at Waterfront, Jackson, Stratton Garden, Columbia Lot, Saruda Park, and the Second Street Planters. Um, and with that, I do have uh David Rovianic uh with Crystal Greens. Uh, he's our uh project manager. Uh, he is on the call as well. Uh, and I would uh take any, any questions.
Thank you, Adam. David, do you have anything to add at this time?
Uh, just the, I am a local Hood River guy, grew up there and now living in Portland, working, but love the city and have deep roots there and proud to be a partner with uh the city of Hood River to um take care of the place that I love and grew up in.
Hmm, thank you, Dave. Questions, councillors, for, for staff or, or, or Mr. Rovianic? Uh, go ahead, Doug.
Thanks, Adam. Uh, thanks for being with us, David. Um, we had a number of concerned citizens ask earlier about uh herbicide treatment of turf, uh post-emergent, pre-emergent, et cetera, that are outlined in here. Are there any options that uh would be a uh, a, a less detrimental option that um Crystal Greens would provide uh as compared to what we've done in the past and what's written in the uh, the agreement here?
Sure, there's absolutely options. We're always willing to be the best partner as possible. Um, if the, the chemicals that we're currently using are not um approved or not desired by the local community, we're happy to partner in any way that um best fits the needs of the community. Um, you know, we want to be great partners and we're willing to work with um Adam and Kelby to make the parks look best as possible um within the desires of the community.
And is this something that you've uh, you've done on, on, on other projects? This is uh, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we have some other partners in the gorge as well that are more near the river and have more stringent responsibilities or sorry, restrictions around what we can and cannot use. Um, and to that, um, there are trade-offs. So the, the chemicals that we use are very effective for treating broadleaf and things like clover. And so if we don't use those, then those will start to pop up more depending on the application of other fertilizers that we use or turf treatments that we can do like aeration and lime um or moss control. But um, you know, once again, we're happy to be good partners and um, you know, I think that everyone really appreciates the beautiful green lush um feeling of the grass on their feet. Um, and we can work with Adam and the team to be as safe as possible as we treat those areas. Um, but really, it's, it's always a trade-off.
And then just one follow-up to that, I made here. Um, so I, I, Adam and Abigail, is there, is there a way for council to weigh in or uh somehow be, be made aware of what's being considered uh and, and, and take that up as uh an action item for us to follow up later if we all decided to do that? What's the best course of action here? Um, if we were to have discussion about doing a cleaner option, greener option?
I, I would say it's probably going to be a discussion uh that I'd have to have with David because I would imagine this may change what is in the contract, um, the way the contract is written. So, yeah, I mean, I definitely think the conversation, willing to have that conversation with David.
But it, it wouldn't be like an amendment or something like that. We'd just have to delay the approval of the contract.
Yeah, that would be my suggestion as well as to choose not to take an action tonight um so that we can go back and look at, you know, it could be a different cost to the contract, could be some different language that would need to be um considered, and that we bring it to you um for future consideration.
Would this delay in any way be problematic?
Uh, no, no, I mean.
I think we could get it to you in the next two weeks. I, I assume um that Crystal Greens would be motivated to help us get that contract to completion.
Again, that's where we decided to go.
And we do, yeah, I'd be looking for, you know, agreement from the majority of you that you want us to do that.
Thank you.
Amanda and then Ben, you know, if I'm out of order, I apologize.
Um, I just will say I am interested in that, exploring other options um and revisiting this at a later date. But I also have a question of like, can you give us an idea, like it says weed spray as needed? Can you give us an idea of like how often you are spraying or how, how much chemicals currently get used in a, you know, average season, I guess?
Sure, absolutely. So the broadleaf spray that we use, um, it's called Speed Zone, and it's a spot treatment, which means if a dandelion pops up in some turf somewhere, we would spray that particular dandelion to stop it from germinating. We typically germinate early spring, um in the spring, and then sometimes in the fall, but usually it's early spring. So spraying would be mostly uh within the April, May months. Um, and um historically, we've really worked hard to spray when there's low traffic uh times in parks, so early in the morning. And we've posted signs um saying, you know, we've actively sprayed. Um, and historically, the, the, or not historically, but currently, um, the dry time for the spray is thirty minutes to an hour. And um, once it's dried, it's considered safe um to be around for people and animals. Um, so then we can remove the signs after that.
Yeah, and I guess that is good for the people, the animals, but doesn't really address the soil and the everything just being absorbed into the earth aspect of it, so.
Sure, absolutely. And that is a trade-off that, um, you know, it's a herbicide and it's meant to kill a weed. Um, and, you know, anything that's meant to kill, I think, is going to be, you know, a part of a trade-off. Um, we can look at other options. And um just speaking to um Crystal Greens partnership with the city of Hood River um in the parks, um, we are willing to, you know, look into alternative options, not an issue.
Great, thank you.
Ben? Uh, by going this route, uh, is there a chance that this could increase the cost of the contract?
I think it'll be relatively level. Um, I think that historically, we've done a pretty good job of managing the turf and um I don't see a, a reason why it would change significantly, um if at all.
One, one, one thing I'll add real quick, uh, there was a comment made about uh spraying in detention ponds earlier. Uh, there is no spraying in any detention ponds. That's
That is correct.
legal to do so. There, there has never been any spraying, never were any spraying in, in any of the detention ponds.
Yeah.
Um, thank you. Um, I, I'm also interested in Adam talking with David a little bit more about seeing what our options are and what the impact of the contract might be. Um, I'm just curious to, David, if you know, are there, um, you, you talked about herbicide options. Um, are there, is there anything that can actually get be used that uh will help with the maintenance and the aesthetic, but also help with just uh environmental, you know? Herbicides are used to kill plants. Is there anything that can help like with uh soil health and plant health that, that you guys apply? And is that a different um impact or charge on?
Absolutely. Um, there's a few different things that we can do. Some of them are included in the contract and some would be above scope. Um, we do a round of fertilizer typically in the spring and one in the fall within the contract, and that just helps keep the grass green and looking nice. Some of the things that are outside of the contract, like um aeration and lime, um, it's really good for the turf, helps get nitrogen down in the soil. Um, those would be above scope, but um really good for um the soil itself and the turf.
I uh raised and managed the uh organic lawn at my home for twenty-two years and uh then I was touring Sherman County uh with a commissioner over there and he explained the way they grow the weed over there is they grow a off, off-season uh nitrogen fixing on the whole quarter, quarter section, which is a hundred sixty acres. And then they spray it off with Roundup. And I realized, oh my gracious goodness, I'm stressing about the teaspoon on my dandelion, and they just buy it by the seven forty-seven load. So for me, it's a tricky balance of like, how, how precise and precious do we want to be versus like what else is going on out there? So I just put that in the mix for context. Um, so the, the, what we thought we were going to do was approve this. Uh, the question is, seems to me, we could, we could pass a motion to say, hey, let's, let's uh delay this and look into this issue that several of us have expressed uh favor for and see if that passes, or we could uh read the motion as written and if that fails, then proceed in another direction. So I think either of those would be a fine next step for us. Abigail, does that seem in order? So I would, uh, who, who thinks they've got a majority?
Well, I, I think I heard one, two, three, four, at least. Uh, they were in favor of um and Gladys raising her hand.
Yeah.
Uh, so yeah, it seems like a majority is at least into looking into uh refining the scope. Um, do we need a motion for that, Abigail?
I don't think so. I think you can direct staff to take this, bring this back to you in a couple of weeks for consideration.
Get something up for that.
Great. And just like a process observation, if, if anyone thinks they've got four votes to pass this, you'd be free to make a motion to say, I move, we pass it and we could see if that passes, passes our vote. So just, we don't, I don't want anyone to feel constricted. Yep. Anything else on this topic, y'all? Thanks, Adam. Uh, Urban Renewal Annual Report, Will.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and City Council. So, uh, for this item, I'm presenting to you as an overlapping district of the Urban Renewal Agency. Uh, the Urban Renewal Agency, uh, borrows against future tax receipts by diverting tax from all overlapping districts and that includes, um, the city. And, um, part of that, uh, uh, of the deal with that is we need to report back to the overlapping districts, let them know what we did, what we're planning to do and what the impact is um, to them financially. So ORS, uh, four fifty-seven dot four sixty requires a, an annual report be filed. Um, and so that is with you in your packet and there is a, um, motion to, um, receive and file. Um, I did just want to hit some high points, um, that, uh, yeah, it shows, um, the remaining maximum indebtedness for each one of the taxing, or each one of the urban renewal districts. It's about two point six million dollars for Columbia Cascade, two point seven million dollars for the waterfront district. And that's after we did that increase to maximum indebtedness. And both of those are pretty much all dedicated to the stormwater projects in the, in the downtown and the waterfront. If there's any leftover money in downtown, we'll engage in a process to prioritize, um, the many projects that we could do that, uh, exceed in cost, the, you know, available resources. Uh, for the heights, uh, we're working on jurisdictional transfer and then we are, uh, very much off to the races to do those first at least three projects that are identified in the Heights implementation, uh, plan. We have that much money, uh, just ourselves, but certainly if we're successful with our asks to the legislature, uh, we would be able to get, uh, much, much further, much faster. Um, and then on the West Side Plan, uh, West Side District that has its full four hundred and sixty, uh, or one hundred and forty-six million dollars in maximum indebtedness that it came into life, uh, this fiscal year. And then we are, um, going to continue to prioritize that as, uh, part of capping off the five-year action plan process, uh, once we get some additional firms, uh, on contract to help with that. So, uh, and I will note, uh, as, uh, end where I started with division of tax, the, um, amount of money that the city for went for urban renewal activities, uh, in the last fiscal year was about three hundred and twenty thousand, uh, dollars. So that's money that, uh, uh, tax revenue that may not have existed but for the urban renewal, uh, doing, uh, you know, catalyzing the development that we've seen in the waterfront, uh, and, and in downtown and elsewhere. Uh, but there's also money that once the urban renewal agency, uh, wraps, it'll be additional ongoing revenue, uh, from here on out, uh, into eternity for, for the city of Ohio for long. We're here. So, uh, with that, uh, uh, so any questions you have?
Thanks. Well, any questions for our Urban Renewal Agency, which is presenting to us as an overlapping district? Thanks. Dogs in the workplace? Oh, I'm sorry. We mo- uh, vote to receive.
I'm.
Thank you, Ben.
I move, uh, to accept the Hood River Urban Renewal Agency's annual report for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second by Mitchell, second by Paulson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Chair votes aye. Thank you all. Abigail.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is the most, uh, controversial and time-sensitive, critical issue you're going to address tonight. Dogs in the workplace. Uh, so I love the fact that we are a, um, family-friendly, including pet-friendly, uh, place to work, but it has, uh, become clear in the last, uh, couple of years that we really need to have some guidelines and rules around that. So anything that we put into our employee handbook comes to you, Council, for, uh, adoption. It also goes to all of our unions first for review. So having worked with, uh, all of our department heads and then with our unions, I think we've got something that allows pets to visit, but not to stay. So looking for any questions you might have, and if not, uh, there's a motion in your packet.
Thanks, Abigail.
Doug? Just wondering what the general sentiment, how this was received, uh, and?
I think there's generally, uh, there's some folks who might be a little bit sad that we're having to set some rules, but I think everyone, there's a universal understanding that it's probably time for some guidelines. And I would include all of your pets in this. I have met, uh, Councillor Paulson's dog, uh, and I would love to meet all of your, uh, furry animals if you want to bring them to our meetings.
Anna?
Has to say that reading through this, I thought it was very reasonable and it's timely. I was talking to my husband this morning and he has two dogs that will never be invited. Very sweet, but they're not home.
That's noted. I'll amend the policy to say everybody's dogs except.
Sweet, but well behaved. Uh, I would entertain the motion.
I move to approve the dogs in the workplace policy and Jackson's wonderful.
Moved by Paulson.
Second and Lemon is wonderful.
Okay, second by Mitchell. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, dogs may visit but not stay. Okay, thanks.
Super, thank you. And just as a, a side note for context, we're bringing you, uh, most recently you looked at the paid leave Oregon policy because that was being brought by the state legislature. Our HR manager, uh, Sandy Galvez and I are working through every chapter of our employee handbook because the last time it was updated was in twenty seventeen. So we look forward to sometime this year bringing you the handbook in its entirety, uh, because there's a lot of, um, updates that are overdue or parts that are missing or need to be revised. So, uh, you'll see that at some point.
Thanks, Abigail.
Mm-hmm.
Work planned.
Yeah, thank you. So first of all, thank you for giving me a day and a half in, uh, December. I really appreciated and appre- uh, enjoyed our time together. Uh, got a lot done, but of course, the real work, it, uh, starts now. So you received in your packet and a little bit beforehand, a spreadsheet of what I think I heard from you, uh, on those days where we looked at our past, uh, goals and projects, you identified some new projects. I, um, in my role as city manager, took that, uh, made some judgment calls about what I thought some of those were, what ranking they might include. I ran that by our department head and leadership team, uh, so that I got their comments. Um, but it's really an iterative process. So I bring you today something that if you think is in fairly good shape, we can make some small changes today and adopt. If it needs lots of work, I will take it back, uh, and bring it to you, uh, in a future meeting. So pretty flexible about this, but and I think just maybe the way is, uh, if you've got your spreadsheets ready to just kind of, we can start with the, uh, critical projects and see if you have comments. So first on note on organization, we did this, uh, two years ago of really ranking your projects by saying, we can't do all of these things, even in a two-year period, uh, we hope to make progress on most or all of them, but to truly note which ones we saw were critical. Uh, given a choice, that's where we want to spend our time and resources. Uh, then significant being that next tier and then the third tier are, um, other, either they're other because they rely on maybe an outside group and therefore we don't have a lot of control over the timeline. Uh, there maybe aren't resources available for that, or the project's maybe too fuzzy right now to exactly even know what that project is, but to really delineate critical, significant and, um, other. And once we have this piece done, this spreadsheet stuff, I will bring you the rest of the report, uh, that I'm working with, the contractor, the consultant we had, just about what the process was, what we heard from the community, uh, the goals, uh, that they have, and then everybody's favorite, we'll put together that matrix of how every project hits all of our goals. So just that for context.
And I assume that top to bottom is not in any particular order. It's not like the bottom line is more important than the top line?
I have actually put them what I think is in order of, uh, it within the projects. So if you want to.
The most critical, critical list is development code update.
Yep.
Got it.
That was, I think, number two last year. Uh, and so you'll notice the first three there on the critical projects are things that are underway. You should finish the development code update this year, uh, system development charges. I hope you have that finished, uh, by the end of February. Uh, and then, um, fingers crossed for Heights jurisdictional transfer sometime this year.
Right, thank you. Uh, so, uh, I can imagine a number of ways to frame this. Do we want to go top to bottom, left to right, as some people do? Anybody on the first line, development code update? Any comments or that, or, or a suggestion about a different process? Uh, SDCs? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Gladys.
Uh, yeah, thank you. I think overall, something that I feel like I'd like a little bit more clarity or for all of us to have a little bit more clarity is the specific metrics or milestones that let us know how project, uh, progress is being made on all three lists throughout our, uh, council goals. And yeah, how are we gonna, how are we gonna know if we're on track or if we need to pull resources from other areas to, to do so?
Please, Abigail.
Thank you, Councillor. I appreciate you bringing that up because that was something I wanted to address, which was this is mostly a to-do list. You'll note this doesn't have a lot of specific activities. It doesn't have a timeline. It doesn't have metrics. But almost all of these will wind up being fleshed out into project management. So they'll have a charter or they'll have, uh, you know, a list of stakeholders. What does the public engagement plan look like? Uh, so that is definitely coming. In fact, when you look at the fourth one on here, bond funding, I don't exactly even know what that means yet. So we'll definitely have to have a number of meetings where we talk about what the scope is of that, what, how much do you want to budget for that? Uh, what timeline do you want to accomplish? So, uh, yes, that's definitely needs to come next.
Sorry, I have one more question. Do you envision at some point that maybe some of us might be leads on some of these projects or yeah, how can we all support all of these initiatives?
That's a great question. And I guess I would ask, uh, Council, and I don't know, you have to answer today, but how do you want to be involved? And it might be when we start looking at projects, you can think about how you want to be. I don't think this council's done a lot of work with subcommittees where you take maybe two or three counselors and ask them to focus on things, but um, certainly I have that experience in the past. We've done a little bit of that, like when we were choosing a new, um, counselor to fill a vacancy, we had a subcommittee. I think they've done that with the parking study and other issues. So if Council wants to do that, we can certainly accommodate it, but I would do that kind of at the project level, then maybe at the work plan level.
Thanks, Gladys. We got to SDCs, uh, the J, the JT? Bonding? Grant?
Uh, this, this one specifically, but I think overall, overall, I think this generally, the list now it's laid out is fine. Uh, this item specifically and a number of, I have no other items that are on my mind. We, I think we need to have an additional time or additional meetings to talk about that or other prioritization things from this list or other ideas that we have. I don't think we had enough time for us to talk about that list or prior- prioritization or other things that we might need to actually discuss, uh, in terms of us prioritizing things and how we're weighting certain things and, and, and that. And, um, uh, to, to address those things, I think we frankly need another meeting of just us to talk about those things frankly.
So as we're working through on this one now, you, you're, you're, uh, indicating we should flag this as needs more discussion. And, uh, so at this point, we, Brant is suggesting that and perhaps we other six will think, yeah, not very much further discussion, but at least one of us thinks that this should go in sort of a special pile at the moment to dedicate some more time to.
I also think that bond funding is something that needs an additional work group from us. What are we gonna bond for?
Yep, great.
Sure, uh, not. Yeah, uh, not necessarily a separate pile or a separate list or anything, but just that, that item on this list where it currently is
Yep.
needs additional attention and time for us to figure out what we're going to bond for, how we prioritize projects, how much.
Yeah.
And then take that to the public and create a bond, um, because we, that's on the list, but it doesn't say what for or what we're going to do with that in any way, shape or form.
Thank you.
Exactly right. One of the actions is, uh, determine what those priorities would be.
Uh, Amanda?
Well, yeah, I feel like I heard you say that, you know, these things, like especially that one, you don't even know what that means. Um, so my impression is that, yes, it's on the list, but there'll be more meetings and there'll be more figuring it out, flushing it out, right? So I don't know. We need to do that before we kind of approve the work plan because it'll happen in the process. I don't know.
No, I just wanted to point out what Abigail, that, that.
Determine one too.
And I think it kind of goes for the same as like the, um, new affordable housing, like don't have any idea of like, okay, in the west side area, but we don't have a property in mind or anything at that, at this point. So like, I think I personally think it's okay to approve this, knowing that we're going to kind of flush it out in the future, but I don't know. I'm new, so I don't know if that's how.
Uh, Ben and then Doug.
Aye.
If I'm looking over there and you want to speak, please grunt when you raise your hand.
Grunt. Um, yeah, I mean, I, listen, misinterpreting Grant wrong. I think what was happening with that particular one is that while others on these lists are a little bit more like flushed out, have some specificity and stuff that we talked about, this one is probably the most nebulous. So I think Grant was just maybe drawing attention to that. Um, obviously like none of these, a lot of these are not like completely, oh, yep, we've got everything set up here. So, um, I think here Grant's probably just drawing attention to it, which I mean, it's true, there's obviously this is probably one of the least fleshed out things on here, but it's not like we're not going to address any of these things with more meetings in the future. That's what I took away from it.
Anna?
I, my understanding was the same as Amanda's, uh, this is a high-level to-do list, check, checklist. And then as we are going through them, we'll figure out, you know, you'll, you'll be presenting, uh, actual project management plans a little bit later, we'll be able to have conversation. I, but then I, what I understood Gladys's questions and Grant's question is, um, you know, you, you mentioned that the way these are presented are in the order of priority, um, but they're happening, some of them are happening simultaneously anyway.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, you know, all these things are kind of the focus. And I guess what we're trying to figure out is how do we know which one is the priority or which ones are being worked on currently? And I guess you're saying all the ones that are the, the, um, critical projects, they are all happening currently. And we'll, we'll get more details on the one, you know, coming soon or I guess what we're looking for is how do we know which ones are the priorities on the critical list or on?
The, um, top three there are underway. So the development code update, the SDCs and the JT. Um, other ones are newer or they have, uh, some things happening. For example, the energy plan has some things that are happening there, but other things are new. So and that's why I put the first three as the top ones as they're underway. Keep going. Don't, don't abandon the work you've already done with those.
And at this, just, you know, pulling this thread, um, uh, you know, I always hear Councillor Paulson say, I wish we could talk about stuff more. So like some, some of this in, which, which I think we all agree with. So I, I, may I suggest that maybe bond funding, new affordable, mixed income housing project, et cetera, that's something that we could have an agenda item about sooner than later to have all of us speak about it versus, you know, piecemeal, one-on-one, that kind of stuff. Should it make sense to do that? Um, does that get to the crux a little bit more to like help refine this kind of stuff? Because it's like, it's tough to like, after a day and a half, like some of these are like definitely, we know what's going on. We, that's a, or it's a, you know, there's some things on here that have to do with, uh, priorities that are set that, uh, for things that are outside of our control for the state or, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Right? So I think, you know, the, the nebulous quote-unquote ones, you know, getting, getting some more time carved out to help refine those a little bit further, get them moving along so that they're not lost in the mix of the ones that are already have, uh, some movement. I think that's kind of what we're.
Yeah, that sounds great. And particularly when I think about the budget timeline, right? That's part of why we do this. Why I'm so eager for you to have it doing in December and then for January to have this. So that gives Chris and I and the department heads a little bit of time to figure out, how can we create the budget to respond to that?
Great.
Yep. And then Doug, just as Doug mentioned. Yep. And then just as Doug mentioned and following up, we went through the exercises on this and ranked choices and whatnot towards the end of these exercises. But then we as council did not have time or opportunity to discuss or debate any of them. Uh, went through, uh, ranked them on our phones or devices, and then we took off, we left. We had no discussion as to why each project was important and discussed the merits or detriments of each one. Um, that we're actually have a discussion about them. Um, so I, I, I felt that that was lacking and we should have had more discussion about these things instead of uh, putting it at the end and leaving. And I, I would like to have more of that if we could. Um, because there's a lot of things that we'll have to approach or address in the future. That's on this list for now, which is fine, but we should be preparing and having those discussions for the next list or whatever those items are. Uh, so we're gonna knock some of these out, and then what's after this list? Might be a year, might be two years, but whatever future council decides is fine, but we should be considering those. Because a number, a number of us, at least, half of us are still gonna be here after, uh, two years.
So this one clearly jumps out as needing some more touch from us at some point. Uh, I feel like I've heard perhaps suggesting that we could approve this document, realizing that. Or I maybe am hearing, perhaps we don't, aren't quite ready to, uh, affirm this line four on, on, on this list. Great.
No, you're, you're correct the first way you stated that.
Right.
Yes.
So I think we've made note about, bond funding needs a little love. Next, we have new affordable. Any comments on this one?
I will mention this one, uh, just was called Mariposa Village Two, and I changed that to say new affordable or mixed income housing, just based on conversations, um, I and council had when we were in the creation of the Mariposa Village, was really a desire for it to be more mixed income, have some opportunities for homeownership. That is not the way it worked out because of the funding. But I believe I have heard from council a desire, not just to create another Mariposa Village, but, uh, to create another housing project more generally. And then again, having to scope out, what does that look like? What are the funding options? Where would that be? That, that's all still to be determined, but I adjusted this, um, goal based on past conversations.
I'm seeing all nods. Yep. Great. Uh, frameworks for community outreach and equity. Comments on this one?
These were two pieces that were separate. I combined them, even though they are, they are different. I think the process is the same in the creation of the frameworks.
City facilities? And e- energy plan. So I'm, I mean, we, we, we're agreeing that these are the critical projects. Yeah?
Great.
Cool. Next page. Oh, and we have green. Um, just driving the bus at a speed I hope is prudent, uh, infrastructure to enable housing. Any comments on this one? Year-round shelter? Doug?
Probably not for right now, actually.
Okay. Uh, parks and open space? Employee investment? Doug?
I'm wondering if you had any chance to talk to Sandy about this?
Uh, we have had a short conversation and she provided me with some of those, um, bullet points, but we haven't explored this in depth. And this is one, I think I got a comment from one of you just saying, make sure to talk to HR and business professionals when you do this, because it's very easy to, to go down a path and spend a lot of resources on things that feel good, but maybe don't actually result in retention. Yes, it was Counselor Paulson. I just didn't know if you wanted to stay anonymous.
City and community sense of belonging?
This is one where I kind of renamed it. And so there's two pieces there. One, I think many of you have heard the work that we're doing internally. We have a staff equity group that's working on things like our documents and, uh, access, as well as helping our newest employees feel welcome, um, really connecting our departments. But then also the external, the community piece, how are we being, uh, a commu, how are we as city employees and as elected officials, um, creating a community where people feel welcomed and valued? So there's an internal and an external component to this one.
Like improvements in the TSP? Downtown open space? Uh, and development review process improvement? Anna?
I just wanna ask a general question about this category of significant projects. Are these also in order pretty?
They're in a general order, yeah.
Did you say that we've gone any of these or only the critical ones?
Yeah, thank you. Um, the year-round shelter has been on the, uh, list on the past, but we've not made any progress. Uh, we had some specific, uh, the Oregon Mayors Association a couple of years ago had a ask before the legislature. We felt very optimistic, but it didn't go anywhere. So that one, uh, I would say does not have anything. Employee investment, we're always working on, uh, city and community sense of belonging. The fact that the mayor has an equity group and we've done some actions there. Uh, and then finally, the development review process improvement, I think has been on the list, uh, forever. Uh, and we've done some things particularly around software improvements and allowing for electronic submissions. Uh, but we always have, there's always opportunities to improve, so.
Oh, sorry Gladys, thank you. Always welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I do have a comment around the year-round shelter. If these projects are ranked, I would, I would strongly suggest that we move the year-round shelter up. Kenny gave us a report about how Hood River and just county, city and county residents are one of the highest utilizers of the services out in the dells right now and the inequity that it creates. I also believe that this is a conversation that we should continue to have with the county. How do we, as both bodies, governing bodies, make this one come to fruition? Whether that's, you know, it's in the county or it's in the city, that this is definitely, in my opinion, something that should be, uh, at the top of our significant projects.
Doug?
Just saying, I, I echo that.
Got a couple of, couple of pings to move year-round shelter up on this page. And then I suppose, just talking this through, like, something could also go around the back curve and make it onto the previous page, right? So we are, it's, that's currently the second, the second one on this. Perhaps that, uh, the, the first promotion would be to make it be the top line on significant projects, staying on the green page. Any, any opinions about that? Anybody opposed to that? Grant?
If, if we're going to move that up, we're moving other things down and reprioritizing things. Um, just if, I mean, it's the second item on our significant list. And Kenny, who's not gonna be there anymore, but it's, it's been a thing they've been driving hard at. I don't, I don't know, if, if we're going to move it up our, our, on our priority list, what would that mean then, uh, in terms of our outlook or commitment or, um, liability? Or however you wanna look at it, in terms of what we're going to do long-term for it then theoretically?
Think we find out that question sooner than later if we move it up.
That's, that's why I was like.
Could I suggest just what Counselor Paulson said, maybe there's a third bullet point there, you know, assist in the acquisition of property, lead efforts to seek state funding. And the third one is, uh, something about ongoing operational support. Is that?
Yep.
Get to what you're talking about?
Yep.
Okay.
Or that not saying we should go down this route, but that it is an option that we have the power of for eminent domain. So whether that's the county, that's within the city, that is an absolute option that we have, or a tool that we have in our toolkit. Hood River, city and county residents are the highest utilizers of the shelter services. It is a need for our constituents.
So I'm gonna try this. If you think we should move it up, give me a thumbs up. That's my, that's the majority. We're moving it up.
Great. And as to Counselor Rivera's point, you absolutely have that ability or in cooperation of the county. Um, you know, if you got to a point where you decided that you needed to acquire land through that, I don't know that I would make that an activity here, because we would wanna extend all, all possible actions first before we did that.
Anna?
Point of clarification, though, we would only have eminent domain within our own jurisdiction.
That's right.
That county.
No, but the county could.
You could bug the county to do it.
We, or we could partner the county to do it in the city.
By bumping something up to critical, does that necessarily mean we have to bump something down into the green here?
No, I would just caution that if everything is important, then nothing is important, so, to make choices. But I believe I heard that was moving it to number one and significant, not moving it to critical.
I think I just asked, shall we keep it in the green, but make it, move it up one line? So now, uh, maybe we're not ready for this question yet, but there's, raise your thumb if you wanna make it blue. Nope.
Excellent.
Thanks, everybody. Great. Uh, let's see. We made it nearly to the bottom of the green. Did we get to development? Yeah, we did. We made it through all the greens. Okay, now we're going to Lilac? Taxi cab and ride share. Doug?
Is this an other, just because there, it's, you mentioned earlier, some of this is outside of our control. It's very difficult to be able to talk to these DNCs, et cetera, et cetera. Is that?
Yeah, I think in part of this, uh, is also just, I think we can knock this one out fairly quickly. I have not reviewed, but I received feedback from taxi cab folks about the draft code. So I hope to get this done in the next quarter.
Cool.
Just as, as you mentioned that, Doug, for whatever reason, it made me think, uh, we just voted to up, ups, move up an item. Uh, we certainly could go the other way too, right? Like, you know, I want so-and-so to be moved down seven rows or something. So as we're looking through it, I just realized, oh, right, we could also make that choice, so.
Yep.
Uh, next, youth outreach? Uh, fog in the wastewater? Levels of service for city parks? Mobile home park preservation?
This is definitely one that would need to be scoped and need more information, because I'm not sure that there's agreement on what this might even mean.
Doug?
Is this similar to what we discussed, uh, what Chris looked into, what Portland did?
It could be.
Gladys?
I think that this, you know, if we're gonna move some items up, that I would, um, I would vote to move this one up.
I would too. I think White Salmon has an interesting story about this. Any, any other thoughts about moving this one up a, a line or two? Yeah, that's the majority. Uh, let's move it up one line, say, sorry, parks. Uh, historic Columbia River Highway, uh, West Cascade Integrated Land Use Plan?
If I can say just a comment about that, this one feels a little out of our control, right? Well, when the historic highway comes to us, we'll be on ODOT's timeline, not ours. Uh, but we anticipate receiving a grant, a traffic, uh, growth management, TGM grant from ODOT and DLCD. Uh, I think I shared with you that when Dustin and I met with them about a scoping conversation, they said 18 months from now, when we finish the scope, uh, I do think that it's looking better than that. I'm more optimistic that we'll be able to bring that to you sooner. But that's a part of why this is so far down the list is, uh, ODOT's timeline is fairly, um, slower than the cities, uh, the, at which the city moves, so.
Gladys?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, my comment is still about the mobile home park preservation strategy. I, I'm certain I heard Abigail say that taxi cabs and ride shares will be completed in about three months at most. Um, I would, I would vote to move the mobile park right after that. I am not dismissing youth outreach or our fog program or any of the others, but we're talking about people's homes and that we don't wanna displace community members. Uh, I recognize that there might be some additional research, but that this item should absolutely be moved up significantly. Uh, I would even be open to moving it up to significant or one of those critical proj, uh, projects that we have available. We are talking about our community members potentially being displaced.
Anna?
Um, I'm afraid I, I don't have the background on that. Are we talking about immediate displacement? I didn't, I mean, obviously it would be on a higher list already if it was, it's critical.
In this last, uh, mayor term, however, we, uh, there was a question about perhaps a, a local mobile home park would go for sale and, oh my gosh, those units would be lost. And like, that discussion was happening. So whether that means, you know, it's going around, or in fact, that mobile home did not sell, but, but that, it's been, it's been, uh, topical in that way.
Thank you. I appreciate that context.
Uh, Doug?
And, and the staff did a great job working with local partners and everything. It was, it was definitely elevated. I, I would echo Gladys's, uh, sentiment. I'd even be into moving it up to significant.
That's two, two thumbs. How many more thumbs we got for moving this one up? A couple more notches. Folks feel, and again, like we've all said, you know, that means, in fact, something else moves down. So, uh, in, in, in favor of moving this up, anybody else? Looking for, looking for four thumbs. That's the third thumb right there. Oh, four thumbs, okay.
Okay. I think, and of course I did this, uh, some time ago, so I don't exactly remember my thinking, but I do think part of my putting it lower was, uh, recognizing that it calls on our planning staff to lead that and their name, you know, Dustin and, uh, their names are on lots of other projects. So just to know that, uh, they are committed to things that you have already listed as critical and significant.
So as long as we're pulling the string, uh, please raise your thumb if you would like this to turn green instead of remaining down here in the Lilac. I got two on that, got three on that, so we're, all right, we just turned green for this. Jump, what do we call it in bridge?
Thank you.
Jump shift.
Well, I think that this is just another tool around our housing options.
And a unit is a unit, you know, unit goes away, that's, that is not building one. Okay, so we, we decided it's going, changing green, cool. Uh, just a couple more things. We did the, we, we did, we, we made it actually just down to the urban renewal district. Uh, that's the last item.
Right. And that's just simply, as you heard from Will, the Columbia Cascade District is, you know, it no longer collects. It just has, uh, some savings or has some funds to be expended or distributed, and just really closing that down and, uh, writing the final report. That was on the project list two years ago, but, um, because of the stormwater and some other things, we have not finished that project.
So this one is, you know, on the tail end of the, still, still in the pack. Being called out specifically as something we're chasing. And everybody okay with that? All right. So that was by no means a perfect way to analyze this, uh, huge amount of.
It's a lot to process.
But, uh, that was pretty good. We moved a few things around and we had to, I thought, a very productive day and a half in, in, in December. And, uh, other, other comments on this topic or, because, because ultimately the step is to, uh, approve, like, approve it and then it goes on the website and, you know, then it's for reals. Doug?
I, I just wanted to call out that we had a number of concerned citizens come to us about fire, fire reduction. And, uh, I imagine most of you, like myself, had discussions with Abigail and Chief Damian. Um, I was in favor of getting that onto the work plan, having had discussions about what's ongoing and how things are funded and, uh, what the plans are, already are from, uh, Chief Damian. Um, I, I, I feel confident that there still can be progress made without it being on the work plan. Uh, just wondering what everybody else thought about that.
Certainly the television coverage of the last month has been astonishing and terrifying. Um, but I'm glad to, glad to hear that there is still some, I, I, I mean, I think that lands, landscape's a funny word to use in this instance, but the, the, that area of thinking and work and municipal planning is gonna be completely upended by this and insurance companies and. So, uh, everybody comfortable with, with Doug's saying it's not quite on, but it's, it's still certainly something that's getting attention? Is that okay with everybody? Great, thanks Doug.
And I'll, I'll, I'll add to, I, I hope we work to ban fireworks again this year.
Yeah.
For a different time, but, uh, I'll be advocating for that.
So while we're all here, uh, uh, a year ago, we talked about, shall we burn, shall we burn? Shall we ban them with, with a lot of lead time? And in fact, Chris and I were on the phone like on July 2nd or something, and we did ban them right at the last minute, which we've done several times. Uh, stick your thumb up if you think it would be worthwhile talking. stick your thumb up if you think it would be worthwhile talking about, uh, a, a longer lead time ban for private fireworks. The, the, the sandbar thing is a separate question, but whether I'm allowed to shoot off a bottle rocket on my curb, uh, raise your hand if you'd like to discuss a longer lead time ban, or if you decide, no, we don't want to go there. All right. So let, we'll get that on the agenda pretty quick here because obviously if we're going to do it anyways, sooner than later, it benefits the, the fundraising and all that.
Right, right. You would want to, uh, address both the use of fireworks and do you want to allow sales within the city and you want if, if there are churches or Boy Scouts or anyone who might be selling fireworks, we want to give them advance notice. So.
And I will just say parenthetically, Amsterdam goes off on New Year's Eve. Like, whoa, I saw some video. They have quite a show.
I've never seen anything like it in my entire life. It should be noted also that most of their buildings are brick. And the few times that they, they would have these competitions, uh, between different coastal cities. Uh, a few years ago, one of those areas, Schaveningen, which if you pronounced it incorrectly during the world war, they knew you were a spy. That's how hard it is to pronounce that, that city, but bunch of embers flew from these bonfire competitions they had and started parts of the city on fire. So.
Winter.
In the winter. Yeah, yeah, just because of high winds. So.
If you go hard, you can really go hard. Okay, great. So we will discuss fireworks ban.
No doubt. Yep, I've got it.
They think, I'm, it is at a date soon. Yeah, I, I didn't think that. Yeah.
Yep. So you have, with the work plan, uh, you have a motion to formally adopt it if you choose to do that tonight, or if you want me to bring back more information, I can do that as well.
I would entertain a motion.
Get back to it here.
Page thirty.
I'll, uh, just for clarification, are we motioning to, uh, prove it as revised for our conversation?
That'll work.
Um, I'll make that motion. I, um, move that we adopt the city council work plan twenty twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six as revised prior discussions.
Moved by Cavalier.
Second.
Second by Paulson.
It was Stapina.
Oh, Stapina, excuse me. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Chair votes, I motion passes. Good work us.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Now, if you don't mind, we're gonna take a five minute break before we finish it off. Thank you.
Yep. Have my five minute break off, I'm meeting. That's gonna put Abigail on the poorhouse. Blowing through.
Mom, I'm eating my snacks.
My dinner.
Yeah. Nobody does the post. Is.
Sometimes I can.
That takes us to finalizing of the ordinance is ten.
Your honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for the second and final reading of ordinance twenty eighty-eight by title only.
Moved by Paulson.
Second.
Second by Stapina.
All right, uh, Counselor Mitchell.
Aye.
Counselor Rivera.
Aye.
Counselor Paulson.
Aye.
Counselor Stapina.
Aye.
Counselor Cavallari.
Aye.
Counselor Gagey.
Aye.
Your honor.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty eighty-eight, an ordinance amending approximately ten point nine nine acres of contiguous territory located within the city's urban growth boundary and withdrawing portions of the city's territories of West Side Fur- uh, Rural Fire Protection District and Ice Fountain Water District, Brookside Pacific Realty Advisors, Inc.
Ordinance twenty eighty-eight has passed its second reading and will become law in thirty days.
Your honor, I'd like to entertain a second and final reading for ordinance twenty eighty-nine by title only.
Um, move by Stapina.
Doug, okay.
Second by Paulson.
Counselor Cavallari.
Aye.
Counselor Mitchell.
Aye.
Counselor Paulson.
Aye.
Counselor Gagey.
Aye.
Counselor Stapina.
Aye.
Counselor Rivera.
Aye.
Your honor.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty eighty-nine, ordinance amending the city's comprehensive land use plan and zoning map to rezone certain properties following annexation.
Ordinance twenty eighty-nine has passed its second reading and will become law in thirty days.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates. Uh, as Will mentioned, uh, City Day at the Capitol is tomorrow. Thank you, Counselor Paulson and Will for representing our city, uh, in Salem. Um, I have a sign up sheet for, uh, Sabados con Nubia. This is, uh, Nubia Contreras, uh, does a radio show on Radio Tierra. Uh, once a month, uh, city, the city is on and invite all of you to, uh, be a guest on her show, uh, and we bring a, um, usually have a third party interpreter. So it's super fun and Nubia, um, actually worked for the city for a while. So knows us well and, uh, is a great host. So we do it once a month. I have a sign up sheet for all of you. I'll just pass this around so you can clean your favorite month right now. There's Saturdays at ten forty-five. Other things coming up, um, I have heard from six of the seven, I've heard from all of the agencies as we talked about you being liaisons to other uh, ju- other, uh, agencies in this that operate within the city. All of them were pleased to hear of your interest. Uh, and all of them have chosen, um, a counterpart except for one. And so I think you all know you, who you are to contact or you've made that contact. Uh, let me know if you need anything from me. Otherwise I look forward to hearing your reports. Um, uh, last week was, uh, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission was here and some of you were here there. Counselors, uh, Cavalier and Gagey, thank you both for, uh, attending that. You received, you should receive certificates. Um, and I think I heard noted that the Oregon Government Ethics Commission hopes or expects, uh, elected officials to attend those once in their term. So, uh, we'll keep you posted for when they plan to do this again. I attended the public meetings one, thought it was super helpful. So. Um, it was, and I think they were pretty entertaining presenters. They definitely know their stuff. Uh, so that was great. And then, um, I think my last thing would be just to know that there's been a lot of executive orders coming from the federal administration. Uh, watching those carefully, particularly how they might affect any federal funding that the city would, might be receiving. At this point, I don't think we've heard of anything that might be delayed. Like usually we don't think of ourselves as receiving federal funding, but things we get from ODOT or things that come through DEQ often are federal programs. So uh, we're monitoring and we'll keep you updated if we hear anything. The one concrete thing I would say is, uh, through ODOT, there's a request in the, um, at the legislature for, uh, what they call congressionally directed spending. So Representative Earl Blumenauer, uh, last year put in a request for two million dollars for our elevated sidewalk project. This is the project, uh, to replace the sidewalk at thirteenth and May. Um, it does not look like it would be a three million dollar project, but once you see how it cantilever is over and just the engineering involved, very expensive project. Uh, so there's two million dollars there. I checked in with, um, Representative Staff before he left. I, I've checked in with our senators. Uh, everyone says those funds are still in there and they anticipate that those will still be awarded. So, um, but I am asking all of our elected officials to babysit that and might ask you for, um, more information or, or pieces. So just know, uh, that at this point, we're just kind of standing by and I will keep you updated. Mm hmm.
Um, is that something that we're gonna spend three million dollars on and then tear up when urban renewal about and all of that?
That is a, uh, I don't know that we have a quick answer, but that question has definitely been addressed.
Yeah, we, we've looked at that. And the elevated sidewalk extends much, much further to the east. Um, there could be maybe a little bit that's impacted by the, uh, roundabout, but by and large, uh, eighty, ninety plus percent of that elevated sidewalk is outside of what would be impacted by the roundabout.
Thank you.
I, I think those are on my comments unless anyone has any questions. And I'm going to come on Counselor Rivera to give an update on, uh, MACAC. Great.
Great. Committee reports, we're gonna start with Doug and we're gonna do it a little different because we're just getting going. You're gonna remind us what committees you sit on and if any have met.
Um, first one, Saruta, uh, we, Gladys and I were not able to attend the first one because it was as we were becoming appointed. So we'll attend the second one, uh, visit Hood River as well. Uh, I've not, uh, had a meeting with them yet. Those are the two committees, formal committees that I'm on. Uh, would we also be doing liaisons?
Sure, that's, yes, that feels right.
Um, so just to remind you, uh, Hood River County School District is who I will be liaising with and, uh, you know, spoke with Abigail a couple of days ago and we'll be reaching out soon to start that dialogue.
Thanks, Doug. Great.
I'm on Region One Act, uh, committee, committee. Um, as you guys, for a little time, I'll be heading down to Salem tomorrow. Uh, we have a meeting on next week on Monday, as Will mentioned prior, um, so we have a little presentation there. Nothing, nothing new. So we tied and I haven't done that in the beginning yet. As mentioned, we, we talked about, uh, uh, that the meeting was right after that. Uh, so I have some content information on that. Yeah. Work with, uh, Anna on when we're gonna go to parks.
And if, if I may tag on just, uh, Counselor Paulson had asked that I send you the agenda when it was posted and it was posted today for the ODOT Region One Act. Um, meeting, which is a February third, and you can watch on Zoom. Um, and, uh, Will will be presenting at that and his presentation is part of the packet if you want to review or preview that.
Amanda.
Um, I'm on the Energy Council and I think I'm meeting with some people in February to get introduced to that and a little and so I have nothing to report from that and the library, I need to connect with somebody at the library. Haven't done that yet.
Thank you.
I don't think I'm on a committee. I don't remember. Um, I don't, I don't think I was assigned to a committee, um, or I'll have to go back and double check that. I don't think I was, but for the liaison, I was, uh, be reaching out to parks. And are you, are we doing that together, Grant? Sweet, okay. Um, yeah, I have, uh, I'll reach out to the contact with Grant.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm the liaison for Columbia Area Transit, uh, and Megan Ramey will be my point of contact. Uh, got an email from her today. I'm gonna try to meet with her after I get back from vacation during the second week of February.
Thank you. Gladys.
Yeah, I'm going back and making my old packet, making sure I have all the committees I'm on. So yeah, like Doug mentioned, Saruda did not have a chance to attend that meeting. I did have a chance to connect with, uh, Commissioner Moretti and Babbitts. Uh, the three of us did have a chance to attend Senator Merkley and Congresswoman Dexter's Town Hall this last Saturday. Um, some of you were there and appreciate, uh, everyone who attended. I'll give an update on that one on, on council comments. Um, nothing to report back on the county at this point. Uh, Regional Solutions has not met. The Women's Caucus for the League of Oregon Cities hasn't met either, but I do want to just give you all an update on, uh, MACAC, so Mid-Columbia Community Action Council. Um, Kenny Lowpoint, fearless leader for a long time, did step down from being the executive director. Uh, the board did meet last week to talk about some interim items. We are looking to appoint an interim director tomorrow. There is a meeting tomorrow at four o'clock where we will have more discussion around that. Uh, services will continue to run as is Kelly Horvath and uh, Sarah Kellums will be operating and have been operating the shelter. So there shouldn't be any sort of interruptions in that. And as I mentioned, we will appoint, uh, a director tomorrow. Happy to take any questions about that.
Thank you, Gladys. Uh, so just on operationally, so our seasonal shelter over towards, on the way to Safeway was open yesterday, is open today. No, no interruptions?
Correct. No interruptions at all for any of the services under the umbrella of the Mid-Columbia Community Action Council.
Thanks. For me, for United Way, we, uh, sent a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars in the mail. Uh, just last week, pretty, pretty terrific from the fundraising we had done towards the end of the year. That's a quarterly distribution, but that's not usually, it's not going to be four times that because that, that's our biggest one. Uh, the Housing Authority, we met this morning. Um, uh, many, many positive steps happening. We, uh, had heard recently about some developments about Mariposa Village, but nothing from the Housing Authority that indicates any further change on that. So we're moving towards hopefully some, hopefully some groundbreaking coming up. Yeah, I'm the liaison to the port. So Commissioner Beaker and I are going to be getting together. And I'm going to also make a point of getting with chair, you were on the, from the county, not as the official liaison with the county, but just chair to chair seemed like a useful, uh, conduit of information to keep open. Couple other mayor comments. Uh, this is a thumbs up, thumbs down thing. There is a local group pretty active in the dark sky movement. The idea being that if we, you know, can be more careful about the light we emit, it'll be nicer for the migrating birds and our aesthetics and energy and et cetera, et cetera. Sisters Oregon, I just saw in the paper, has just become an official something, something dark sky. Dark Sky Week is in April. The request is, would we pass a resolution not binding any of our activities or saying we have to buy seven trillion new light bulbs or anything, but to, to, to say we are in support of dark sky. Uh, so this is the first, y'all have heard of it. The advocates have been approaching me and I said, okay, let's just hold on here. And, uh, now, now I'm officially inquiring, like, would you like me to get you all more information about perhaps having a proclamation saying we in general support dark skies during Dark Sky Week in April? Thumbs, lots of thumbs. Great. Thank you. Um, I have a friend who works at Mid- I have a friend who works at Mid Valley Elementary, which is about, I believe, three quarters Latino students. And there's a lot of energy and fear up there about the new administration. So there's a legal aid session on Wednesday night. So I'm going to be going up there sort of just to show a blonde head and also to try to be in touch because that's certainly an important part of my equity work and, and whatnot. So I wanted y'all to know about that and be happy to give you more information. It's not like I'm going as a dad, I'm going as a neighbor. And so that's happening at one of our, not city schools, but very much in our community. And at my Equity Advisory Council, we did discuss about how we can be a good ally. Not, not like we're going to lead a know your rights session, but we should know what's going on and put our shoulder to the wheel. So I'll be going up there on Wednesday. I wanted y'all to know about that. And I also just wanted to check in that for the last weeks and weeks, we've had a bunch of people blocking the sidewalk in front of the hospital. Obviously that strike negotiation is ongoing. And I did check in with Abigail to make sure it's not creating disruption for our city operations. And, you know, I, I see the arguments on both sides of that negotiation and I wish them all well. But so far, so good in terms of city operations, that has not caused traffic impingement or anything like that. So that, that is ongoing, as, as is our city is ongoing. Those are my, my things to talk about. Thank you. This is the point, and this is a little bit new, so I'm sort of practicing myself. This is where we now talk about the public comment we received. So I think the, the Crystal Greens comment got pretty well incorporated into that conversation. Does, does everyone feel comfortable with that? Now is to talk about the, the question about 5G. So Abigail, did you have something to warm us up on that or?
Well, I think Dustin and I just kind of off the cuff can, off the cuff can tell you a little bit about the context about 5G. And then I didn't know if you wanted to bring that forward for a more complex conversation or, you know, there wasn't a particular issue that's coming before you with 5G, if you wanted to have a conversation. But just generally, I will say that the city is very limited in the activities we can take to regulate 5G or small cell technology. Because federal legislation many years ago, I think like 96, actually preempted a lot of what we can do. So between Dustin and Dan, I think maybe we can give you just a little bit of education on this and then let us know if you want more detail.
Dan, do you want to start?
Yeah, the Telecommunications Act preempts local regulation of these sorts of facilities on virtually every basis, certainly every basis related to actual or perceived health effects. Total preemption there. What's left is aesthetics, but the 5G rollout has even fewer opportunities to regulate that. Basically, federal law paves the way to require these things to be allowed outright into public right of way.
So given that outright allowance in the public right of way, I believe it was three years ago that we adopted through our engineering standards, a time, place and manner ordinance that basically was what limited area that we had to regulate this was to determine where in the right of way, under what circumstances, the time, place and manner in which they would be allowed. Not if they would be allowed, but how they would be allowed. And so this was in response to some of the federal legislation that, that really said you will allow the use of your right of way for 5G microcell. And so within the engineering standards, we now have features on how we regulate the cabinets, in what location they would be, when co-location can occur and some of these look features. So the reason why you see them in the right of way is because you have to allow them in the right of way. Now, in which manner are they allowed in the right of way? That's, that's what we worked on and that's, that goes through engineering standards, similar review as if you want to build a sidewalk. So that's where there, it isn't a public process. There are not any democratic policy discussion on it. It's the purview of the city's engineer. They meet the standards, they're issued a permit. And so it's different from your land use applications where you have public notice, public hearing, public outreach, public participation. This is a very different direction. You will allow it, you're required to allow it and it's administered by the engineering department. Anna.
So just for clarification, the applicant comes to you and says, we want to put a tower here and as long as it meets the engineering standards, we have to allow it?
Correct.
Thanks.
I would say it's even more strict than that. There's very much a limit to what we can charge for that. And there is a very accelerated shot clock in which we have to approve it. So we cannot delay, nor we can we charge what we think, you know, we, we can't charge more than, than the federal government believes is appropriate. We are very, very hamstrung in what we can do in the regulation of these technologies.
And on private property, we're also required to co-locate. Much like your, much different than your land use applications for other properties. We're on 120 day shot clock. Spectrum Act, Dan, I believe is, are we on 60 days from the time we receive an application? So they, not only that will they be approved, they will go to the front of the line. So your housing applications all push, all the cell stuff goes to the front. Because if we don't, we're, we're accountable to Verizon, AT&amp;T, the federal government for basically disrupting this, this act of commerce.
Not meeting the federal requirement. Typically, 5G does not entail new towers, though. They're usually tack-ons on existing structures in the right of way, light poles, utility poles. They tack them on on the top, they're about, I know they're like a foot or two long tubular things. They're not like cell panels. They're pretty innocuous and you see them all over the urban landscape. They just are little extensions on these utility poles and light masts.
I had a question too, but so when, when our constituents come to us and have questions about the safety and the requirements of them, would we refer them to the beds?
I think ultimately that that's not going to be like a super satisfactory coffee shop answer.
Now we talked about like part of the code development that you're working on is like towers and stuff like, will that have any effect on this or does this just supersede everything that you're like, it's not going to be subject to whatever you're working on the code?
Well, right now, as I mentioned, there's nothing in our zone code specifically mobile. So if you choose to, to install something, it can have an effect on the time, place and manner, which especially in the private property side. So the right of way less so, your right of way in which it's done, but however the towers, the siding, private property, you can, you can have a significant impact on, on locally and how that's administered.
Okay, so the code change wouldn't affect the right of way.
Right. An engineering standard change could. But one of the sidebars on that conversation is you're going to have to allow this. But not allowing it is, is not going to be one of your options that's available to you. So it's how do you want to allow it? I guess I'd like to refine my answer to you, Anna, that yes, contact depends on a little bit of allyship, helping folks realize. And, and here's how you do, you know, like go on the web and there's staff standing by to hear from the caller saying, noted, thank you, the Congresswoman will, will know that, you know, this many calls came in on this topic. So that is in fact a voice. Yep.
Great. I, I will say I caught folks as they were leaving, so I gave them my card. If they wanted to know more about, you know, this is this piece that we just talked about, for them to contact me, I believe I've talked to at least one of them in the past just about the, the city's limits and encouraging them to contact their federal representatives.
All right, anything else on the public comment that we've received?
Doug, then. Any concerns from Chief Holsey on this topic? I know in a lot of communities across the world, there's people burning these towers down and doing a lot of crazy stuff, so just wondering.
I have not heard from him on that, but I will check in. Thank you for that.
I don't think that's legal.
Definitely not legal, but yeah, I don't know if this.
The city attorney has, has chimed in, thank you, Dan.
No, I just, I don't, I don't know if there's been any, any trespassing or anything regarding this. Maybe there hasn't, let's hope it stays that way.
All right, great. So now, council comments, we'll start online with Gladys. What do you got for us, Gladys?
Yeah, I had an opportunity to attend Senator Merkley and Congresswoman Dexter's Town Hall this last Saturday. It was at the Hood River Middle School. There were many nurses there that were talking. There were folks that talked about Gaza. There were folks that talked about some of the mission work taking place in Guatemala. And I just want to give a shout out to the community member who spoke in Spanish and just talked about the fear and uncertainty in the Latino, Latin community around some of the events that have taken place in this last year and the executive orders that have been talked about. Just want to continue reminding us that there is fear within our constituents. There were rumors last week that ICE was at Guadalajara, that ICE was at Tropicali. Appreciate the mayor attending the Wednesday meeting. I will be out of town and unable to attend. But as other groups are getting together to just talk about and know your rights and really that, that preparedness for folks on where to go, I think it's incredibly important for us to have some of that information and figuring out ways that we can, as, you know, the mayor mentioned, continue to be an ally and how we as a city can disseminate that information. There's a lot of false narratives or just false information that is being shared that's inaccurate. And this is a community that, you know, thirty, if not forty, if not more percent of our community members do identify as Latino and they are a huge asset to the community. And just want to continue reminding folks that it is, it's very real and that it's a very valid fear. Besides that, nothing, nothing else for me.
Anna.
I just, I would like to know how we as council members can know what our resources are so that we can, on that particular topic, so that we can be supportive for our community members and helping them know what resources are available to them in order to help them feel safe in our, in their community. So I, I appreciate you saying that, Gladys. And then wanted to mention that one of the opportunities I had in the last couple of weeks was to attend a screening at the Dallas Discovery Center. It was called, it was a movie called Sacred Hills. And it's, it was put together by our Native American community, global, like locally in the gorge, regionally, I should say. And it was incredible. If there's another opportunity for anybody to get to see that movie, it was amazing. It was about the green development, so solar and wind and how that's impacting our local tribal rights to access their, their lands. And it was a powerful film. It was really amazing. So I'm just grateful that I had an opportunity to go and see that. And I think it's something that we should all just be aware of.
Sacred Hills.
Sacred Hills, it just came out, it was really amazing.
I also had the opportunity to attend the town hall and the meet and greet that preceded it. Very much agree with Gladys, that particular individual who spoke was, was incredibly moving. The fear there was palpable of what could potentially be happening. I thought it was a, you know, it was a really good town hall, there was good questions. It was, you know, very respectful and engaging. And I think that leaders did a good job of really answering the questions that were presented to them. Gaza also did, was a large focus of it, was mainly Gaza and, and concerns about immigration. But yeah, it was good to attend as an elected official as opposed to a reporter. It was definitely a different perspective. It was extremely well attended. It's always a good sign when, you know, they have to start bringing out benches and chairs when the bleachers aren't able to, you know, contain everybody there. I will say though, as a member of the audience brought up, it was, you know, primarily people who want attendance were, you know, an older demographic. And, you know, I'm glad that youth outreach is one of the, one of the elements of our, of our work plan. Because as a gentleman pointed out, you know, the torch is being passed to younger generations. So yeah, like to see, like to see more, more involvement, at least, you know, in person. But it was a very, very well attended meeting.
Doug?
Yeah, a couple of things. One thing that came to mind as I was thinking about this, this next couple of years, I did not attend the town hall meeting. I attended the last one when Gaza was very much on the docket. I asked Senator Merkley, would it, would it, would it be helpful if the city issued proclamation and an ordinance, a resolution, whatever, whatever it might be? Because we had some debate about that last time. Is it helpful? Dodge the question, unfortunately, said, well, you know, I'm very much in favor of Gaza. You know, like that was one of the first senators, but the city can do whatever the city wants to do. Being that we're entering a, a pretty dangerous time in America right now, I think we're going to hear from a lot of constituents on issues like that. I suggest that we have some sort of framework about how we deal with it to be able to minimize confusion on part of the staff, the council, et cetera. You know, when someone comes to something that has maybe not that much to do with us, how do we, how do we handle that effectively? I think part of the, one of the positive steps I've seen is us having a discussion about what people came to talk about. I think that's one way to handle that. But I would, I would suggest support for at least us to spend some time on how we think about how to handle those types of issues as they, as they arise.
If I, if I can not, sorry, jump. I have heard from some constituents who suggest that what we should do is pass some sort of a declaration that says, we're not going to chime in on stuff that's out of our wheelhouse, like a, like a choosing not to get involved in foreign policy or something like that. I can see the plus minus of taking up that discussion. Thoughts on that, like Ben?
Yeah, I mean, I know that all politics are local. But I very much agree that as passionate as we may be about national level politics, if there isn't really a direct tie to something that's going on in the city of Hood River, I'm really not interested in spending our time and resources on addressing stuff like that, even though I may have a very strong opinion about it. I don't think that that's what we're here for. I think we get enough of that already on social media, TV, national level stuff, like whatever. And if it doesn't need to be talked about, it's not something that's directly affecting policy or stuff like that, like I'd rather not muddy the waters because then that can undermine a whole bunch of different things. So unless it's something that, you know, really makes sense, that is really, you know, localized, then I'd rather not get into stuff like that.
So for my understanding clarification, Ben, the idea of taking up a topic to perhaps us pass a resolution that says, we're not going to pass resolutions on stuff that doesn't concern our residents, like yes, would you be in favor of my kind of bringing that to us or simply agreeing that we're not going to talk about those topics? Or you could think.
I, sometimes I'm not in a, not in favor of like huge blanking statements to things like that. I mean, not that it'd be like the most binding thing. But I mean, yeah, that's kind of what I'm getting at a little bit, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I jumped in on Doug, but we're still on the thread, so Gladys, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to jump in. What I appreciate is that we all have different opinions and we don't have to agree on everything and that that's okay, but that we at least have these discussions. And I want to quote Dr. Martin Luther King. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience." "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Our constituents' issues should absolutely matter to us. Do we always have the power and authority to make a difference in that? Absolutely not, especially when it comes to these federal issues. But sometimes it's as easy as we hear you, here's where we stand. We agree there's horrific things happening. Sometimes that's just enough for folks to feel heard, to feel seen, to feel validated. And if it matters to our constituents, it should absolutely matter to us as the governing body at a local level. Like I said, can we make an impact on federal policy? Maybe not always, but absolutely should be open to these conversations and discussions as they come along.
Back to Doug. Thank you, Gladys.
And, and, and that's what I was getting at as well. I, I would just hope that there, last time it was very, you know, when an issue came up, I, I would choose, uh, what, what Gladys is describing more. Also what Ben said, not having a blatant statement, but what do we do? How do we elevate it? How do we have a good conversation about it? How do we move along? Cause yeah, the last thing I want to do is have galleries full of people coming here, week after week after week after week, like we have with, with Gaza. Cause we were kind of wishy washy on it, right? That kind of thing. So if there's anything that can be done about a framework for how to handle those kinds of things, because I agree, you know, a simple gesture, um, might, might be really effective. As Gladys was saying, I, the next thing I wanted to bring up in, in light of that is, in, in that thread is last, last time, uh, this type of rhetoric was out there from the administration, uh, city council did pass a resolution. I'm wondering if we need to revisit that resolution or if we feel like it's sufficient. I want, you know, uh, there's, I'm not sure, I haven't read it recently. You know, transgender youth feel very, very scared in this community. I want to make sure everybody's absolutely represented. Uh, I know we also, I was a non-council at the time, but I know council also made a good, um, effort to not single out single, you know, uh, communities, uh, so that people didn't feel left out. But just wondering if that's worth revisiting to show our dedication to the safety of our, uh, you know, our communities that are feeling the pressure right now. I know there's not a whole lot we can do, but I, I, I go back to when I was on the Children's Park Committee, uh, prior to being a city councillor and just hearing words about, um, as we were asking about, you know, uh, the Latino, uh, Latinx community, uh, what their input was and, and receiving feedback that they probably won't come to the park because they're afraid of ICE raids. Really hurts. So I know there's not a lot we can do, but symbolically as leaders of the community, uh, what, what, what are ways for us to, do we use city, uh, social media to pass along what you learned on Wednesday, those, those sorts of things? I think should be addressed in, in some ways, shape or form.
Gladys?
Strongly agree. If you all had a chance to go or drive by some of these businesses, these Latino owned businesses, they were empty because folks thought ICE, ICE was here in our community. And that, you know, just as Doug is mentioning, that we, we must reaffirm our commitment to our constituents to some extent. And if that's updating our equity resolution, be completely open to that. If that means, um, I can't recall all of it right now, but that, you know, the city's going to continue doing ongoing work to make sure that we fully understand these issues, how they're impacting our community members. And, you know, some of these efforts are seen in our council work plans and our goals that we have, that we will continue our commitment to practicing cultural humility, that we cannot take a four hour class and be fully competent and know everything that there is to know about some of our constituents.
So we're doing a lot of thumb voting tonight. I'm going to ask, would you all like me to re-resurrect the eight, the eight-year-old resolution we did pass just after his first, first election? Uh, we, we said something, we, we came to agreement and, and said something. Would you all like to see that? Good, I will, uh, I'll work with staff to pull that, pull that back up. And just to, to vent for a moment that, uh, I've had input from folks that, uh, putting the Gaza issue to a discussion is anti-Jewish. To not do it is anti-Gaza. Like, okay, so there's that. Anything else, Doug?
No, no, thanks for the discussion, everyone.
Um, it's nice that we're non-person elected officials. Thanks. Yeah, the, the resolution you're looking for is, uh, 2017 dash zero two, um, just for ease of looking it up. I don't have any other council comments or anything going on right now.
Thanks. Amanda?
I don't really have anything.
All right. That brings us to the very end, except for the executive session. So I'm going to read the script. City council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192 dot 661 H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of the public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room and we will now end the public broadcast. Representatives of the news media are not present. No decision may be made nor final action taken in executive session. The executive session is anticipated to last, what do you say, Abigail? 20 minutes at the end of the executive session.